Welcome to our new venue at Christopher Newport University. We appreciate the hospitality for the Tuesday, July 2nd City Council Work Session Meeting. At this time, I will turn it over to the City Manager to discuss the competition study. Over to you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As you may recall, in December of 2023, the city administration began to address the challenging job market by positioning the organization to remain employer of choice. As a result, an RFP was issued and Evergreen Solutions was selected to conduct a comprehensive study of our compensation and pay structure. Over the years, the city has adjusted its salary ranges, position classifications, and pay practices on a number of occasions. Despite these efforts, the current competitive climate in Hampton Roads makes it challenging to hire and retain employees. Working closely with the Department of Human Resources, a steering committee with employees from each department in the city of Newport News was selected to participate in the compensation planning process and provide feedback on the proposed study recommendations. And we have with us this afternoon a group of steering committee representatives who are joining in and listening to our discussion this afternoon. And at this time, I would just like to ask them to stand. They're sitting on the very front row. They're hard to miss, but I just want to recognize them for all of their hard work, time, and attention. The goal of the steering committee and Evergreen Solutions was to ensure that Newport News remains an employer of choice by offering competitive and attractive compensation to attract and retain top talent in the region. We seek your support this afternoon to approve the recommendations of the study to achieve these objectives. At this time, Mark Holcomb, a project manager with Evergreen Solutions, is with us today to present the results of the study. Mark, thank you.
Thank you. And as you come up to give the presentation, I just want to say, in my mind, human capital and talent management are the most important things that we can do for the teammates of Newport News, ensuring that they are paid at the appropriate level to ensure that we can recruit and maintain the top-tier talent that we currently have. So with that, we'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to present Mark Holcomb with Evergreen Solutions. We're going to walk you through the compensation study. It's been a long journey since December is really when we kicked it off. And I will present the first few slides, and then I'm going to turn it over to him to explain more of the methodology and the background of how we got to where we got. This is a team effort. It's been one all the way through. Okay, so what we did in terms of human resources is we decided to make this a very collaborative approach. We wanted a partnership with our employees because we believed that with something as large as this and with the challenges we face, we needed to have employee input. They had to be part of the team in this process. So we developed, as you just met, a steering committee of employees that represented every single department. We met on a weekly basis. We created an academic approach to compensation where the participants learned about compensation. They learned about what it meant, and they developed ultimately a compensation philosophy, which meant that all the departments had to agree on how you decided to pay people. And it was a very robust, engaging kind of environment where we had lots of input and challenges and all sorts of friendly discord. And we came up to what we think will be the plan that will help us go forward. And that includes the variations of the departments because kind of everybody has their own needs and wants. With that large order, we went ahead and created a committee, let's say, worked with You just were introduced to the members. And we determined what the approach and the proper methodology should be. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over for the details and the particulars to Mark, who will kind of walk you through this.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all having me here today as well. So jumping into talking about the compensation study, I think it's important to emphasize we're picking up where we just left off with the steering committee. Whenever Green Solutions came on board, again, we wanted to be a part of that collaborative process. So we were working with HR. We also met with the steering committee, not weekly, but we did meet with the steering committee several times throughout the study, really to review things like the history of your organization, the compensation system, the way it's operating currently, to educate a little bit about best practice compensation philosophy as well, so that when the city was able to make the selections and choices of, you know, here's the way that we would like to compensate, and here's the approach that we would like to move forward with. It was coming from a place of knowledge and experience and not just from a place of what each individual department might want. They had that shared framework and basis of what would work best for the organization. So jumping into the market information, giving you a little summary of kind of the way that we conducted this study and what we looked at. We did look at 140 different benchmark classifications directly versus the market. And so those 140 different benchmark classifications, those were the positions that we pulled direct market data from the peers that you see listed on the right-hand side of the slide. They were a representative sample of the employee population that we were looking at. And so what that means is you had, again, positions from every department. You had some from the lower end of the pay scale, some from the higher end, some from the middle. They represented multiple job families and different types of positions across the organization. So that when we came back with recommendations, again, we had information on each of these different job families, each different area, and entry-level pay, mid-level pay, as well as underpaid positions.
Sir, a question. When you did this methodology, this is just the salary. This does not include fringe benefits, hybrid work, or is that all included?
So this was looking at, and you'll see that, I think, third or fourth bullet, and we're going to focus on the structural compensation data. This was focused on the pay structure, so the entry-level pay, the maximum pays offered. It was not focused on the benefits and the supplementals as well.
Thank you.
With the 20-year peer organizations, again, listed out to the right, do want to emphasize, because those peers do represent your local market, but also some stretch a little bit further out into the regional market as well. We did provide a cost of living adjustment that was done on a regional basis. And so for an organization that may have higher or lower cost of living than what you have right here, we didn't want to let that influence the data and either artificially inflate or deflate the salary recommendations that we had. And so what that means is all the recommendations and all the comparisons that we made are going to be put in terms of the spending power that an employee would have with that salary in your local area. As we mentioned, this is focused on the compensation structure. So we'll, again, show what that structure is going to look like in a moment with the recommendations. But there are other considerations that'll go into that as well in terms of how do you fit employees into that structure, et cetera. But the recommendations in the market comparison was primarily focused on those salary structure pieces of information. While you do see on the right-hand side of the page, of course, those are other public sector peers that we compare with, we did take a look at all industries, so including the private sector as well, with a secondary data source. So we did look at the Economic Research Institute. We pulled back salary information that basically let us understand not just how do you compare with your public sector peers, but how do you compare to the private sector as well? With the market analysis and really getting into sort of the takeaways that we had from the market, what were the actual findings that we had? Well, the top, the blue, you know, information over the top, when looking at those 140 different positions as compared to the public sector regional market, we did find you within about 4% of the market at the midpoint of the pay range. And so the important thing to emphasize here is not every position came back in exactly the same way. Of course, some positions came back a little bit further below, some positions came back a little bit in a little bit of a stronger position. So this is not a universal finding, but if we had to boil down that market comparison to one number, I think this is the most important number to look at is you've done a good job with compensation, but as was mentioned, with the competitive market that you find yourself in today, you have slipped a little bit below the midpoint of that market at that 4% differential that we found versus the other public sector peers that we compared to. With the private sector, so that's that information down at the bottom in that yellow box there, you were about 15% below that private sector number. Now, that's not a surprise to see the private sector number, of course. Private sector typically is going to pay a little bit higher than the public. So when we made that comparison, again, it's important to recognize that you're not just competing against other local governments. Some of your positions do have the opportunity, when you're recruiting, somebody would have the opportunity to work at a public or private organization. Now, to the point that was just made, again, benefits can differ there. There are some other considerations, work-life balance, the stability of the organization. So we don't take it as necessarily 100% apples-to-apples comparison, but it is still an important factor to look at because, again, employees are going to consider both the public and the private sector. So the key point of emphasis here, yes?
Within 15%, higher or lower?
The 15% was pretty well close to the average. We did a couple different comparisons, so it is 15% below the market. So you're trailing the market by about 15% if that's that question, yes?
Thank you.
Absolutely. So again, just to emphasize, when looking at the market, you are close behind your public sector peers, about 4% below, a little bit further below the private sector market then. So with those findings, what we did is we came back with some recommendations for the city in order to basically set up a structure that would allow you to be that employer of choice, that would allow you to be market competitive when looking at the pays that you're offering to your employee population. Oops, excuse me. So with this, we developed a couple different options to look through, but through conversations, again, with that steering committee and a collaborative process with conversations and review with HR and that steering committee, we did come out and recommend a hybrid pay plan for implementation for your general employees. So you'll see over on the right-hand side of the screen or of your printout, there are two different plans essentially that the city would be able to utilize to administer compensation to their, again, general employee group. The open range plan you'll see at the top goes from grades 101 to 110. That is very similar to the pay that you will see essentially in public sector organizations across the country. It's a similar setup and similar structure. It is going to look more similar and be more familiar to your employee population. But where the hybrid comes in is down at the bottom with the broadband pay plan. And that broadband pay plan, you will notice, there are fewer grades, but each grade is actually wider. So it's a bigger difference between the minimum and the maximum pay for the range. And the benefit of that broadbanded pay plan is it does allow your organization to be more nimble and actually adjust for and account for the market in a much quicker fashion. So the broadband pay plan actually can give you an advantage when comparing to the other peers that we're comparing to. Broadband pay plans are not new or not necessarily unique, that no one else has seen them, but they're not the typical approach. So this would actually be, again, a competitive advantage that your city would hold in that the positions governed by this broadband pay scale would better be able to react to the market. I don't think I have to remind anybody how competitive the market's been really since 20, you know, into 2020, 2021. When the market takes off, when there is inflation, when there's a competitive job offering and other organizations are able to quickly adjust their pay, the broadband pay scale gives you the range that you're actually able to adjust your pay scales quicker to account for the market. There is also, again, a little bit separate from this study, but also going on at the same time, a performance-based executive compensation plan for department heads and above. That was a city initiative that went on at the same time, so that would also be coming into play. The banding assignments themselves were made, again, primarily by Evergreen Solutions, and then the recommendations were passed to the city and to that steering committee to take a look and make sure that, again, the information that we collected in the market passes that smell test from the city as well. When they're familiar with these positions, they're able to look at the classifications. They know the way that they're operating on a daily basis, and they're able to look at that, ask questions, and really dive in a little bit deeper to make sure that we have as accurate of slotting and recommendations as we can for individual positions. So those assignments were all made, again, based on the market data that we pulled, but also based on internal relationships within the organization. The ability for us to look at different classifications and see how they relate to one another in terms of which position has more complexity, which position has more leadership or has decisions that they're required to make that are more impactful across the organization or to the public. Those are some of the factors that we look at to make sure that we're slotting positions in the appropriate pay range as compared not only to the market again, but internally. The cost to implement the plan is approximately $2.6 million. That would be the annual cost, so the cost that would be absorbed for the full year. That cost does include the fringe benefits and adjustments that would take place. So again, that cost specifically, when you raise compensation, of course, some of the benefits go up as well. So that cost is the all-in cost there. It costs about $650,000 to turn the plan on essentially. And so what that means by turn the plan on is if you recommend the plan, and again, you can look at any of the example pay ranges, if you look at pay range 105 and you see that the entry-level pay is about $42,000, if somebody's currently making $39,000, there would be a $3,000 cost to make sure that they fall within the pay plan. So that adjustment itself across all positions recommended to fall into these plans would be about $650,000. However, if you only adjust the minimum amount required to turn the plan on, you will run into things like employee compression, where you have most of your employees bunched up at the bottom end of the pay scale, and it can cause concerns with employees. It can cause inversions in relationships that we don't typically want to see. So that additional money was allocated, again, and looked at by Evergreen Solutions as well as your HR department to really go into the pay equity and adjusting for internal compression and inversion. So that's what that additional money would be for. But that 2.6 is the annual all-in cost for moving into the pay scale as well as adjusting for compression and equity concerns. So with the projected timeline and the next steps, again, we are here with this first step now presenting the results to City Council. The public safety step plan and general employee pay structure would be going into place in the next couple months, August to October, again, if everything moves forward as intended. The public safety step plan would be turned on in January of 2025, and then the general pay plan structure implementation would take place in the third quarter of FY '25. So again, yes.
I do have a question. Didn't we just adopt a plan?
Correct. This is referring to the plan that you've just adopted.
That you just adopted, so we have already done it.
Correct. But my understanding is they're not inside, is the plan already turned on to the employees in that plan currently? Correct, yeah. So the actual time when the employees would move into the already approved plan is January. So it's been approved, but the employees are not currently governed by the plan.
Okay.
Sorry, a moment of just clarification. So for public safety, we've already clicked it up this fiscal year. We are, I'm going around telling them that it's going to be sooner than January. Is that not accurate, or is it a hybrid? What is the correct answer?
The correct answer is still plans for January 1st with the hope that we can turn it on a little sooner. January 1st is the date we are adhering to.
Let's do what we can to push that to September 1st. Let's, sooner the better for that. And let's communicate that, please, so that the two chiefs as well.
So again, with that pay plan, then, again, as we can see, this is the projected pay plan, or excuse me, timeline that we have right now for the projected timeline, but is obviously subject to change, again, depending on other priorities that come up. So that was the last content slide that I have. Are there any questions that I can address or, again, for HR, the steering committee?
Councilman Long.
Okay, so the 2.6 million, that accounts for the 4% bump to the midpoint range. Is that, is that my understanding? We're trying to get up to that level for the public, for the public sector?
Looking at the general employee pay plan, this is not simply a 4% across-the-board adjustment. The 4% was the average market differential that we saw across all employee positions. However, some positions were more market competitive, so some positions were at market or above market, some positions were further below, so they might have been 10% or 12% below market. So we didn't simply do one, you know, across-the-board adjustment to everybody. The 2.6 million would account for that market gap by allocating a little bit more money to some positions, a little bit less to others, again, depending on the need, but it would put everybody into a market-competitive pay grade, so it would give everybody a competitive slot, and it would do things like addressing compression. So if a position moves up further, we may need to essentially address those employees a little bit beyond just the minimum so that we're not bunching everybody at the bottom of the pay scale.
Okay, and a follow-up question, and I appreciate that, so overall 4%. Follow-up question is the grades. So each job, department, and as well as the level in that department, is it assigned a grade, or were y'all recommending that grade to those different job titles?
Correct. So each individual job title or each individual position within the organization would be recommended one of these grades in this pay scale. And so you might see, again, if there's a Level 1 and a Level 2 of a position, maybe the Level 1 is in grade 101, and the Level 2 might be grade 102. That would be, again, to account for that additional complexity or leadership there. The supervisor might be in grade 105 or 106. So every single position would be tied directly to one of these pay grades, and once they're tied to that pay grade, again, we would recommend that the city ensures every single person was making at least the minimum of that pay range. For a brand-new hire, a minimum might be appropriate. That might be where we leave that person. But if you've been here for 10 or 15 years, it may not be appropriate for you to sit at that minimum. So again, that's what those equity adjustments would be for, to make sure that not everybody's sitting at the same spot if you have a long-tenured employee or a brand-new employee, or a high performer and somebody who, again, is brand-new and hasn't had a chance to establish that record yet.
So how would that look every year? You know, city will say 4% overall compensation increase for everyone within the pay structure. How does that work? Does it move the grade around? Does the title move the grade? Or are you increased within that band? And then you could peg out at that point as well. How does that?
Sure. So in a typical year, and again, this is something that would vary year-on-year, this is something that your HR department is going to be tasked with administering and making recommendations on an ongoing basis. But in a typical year, you may recommend an increase to the pay bands themselves. And so you may say the pay bands might move by 2%. You may also then recommend employees to move by 4%, again, to use that number. That means employees would see progression into that range because they're moving further than the pay bands would move. When that happens, over the course of a career, you might see somebody make it to the top or the maximum of that pay range, which is okay as long as your pay ranges are competitive with the market. So again, that's why HR is going to be tasked with looking at the market and making sure that you maintain pacing with the market over time. We do recommend taking a more comprehensive or holistic look every three to five years. And so again, while you don't need to do a comp study of this degree, you don't need to look at 140 different positions, you don't need to do that every single year. After about three to five years, it is recommended you take a more holistic look to make sure you haven't missed anything, that nobody's fallen behind, there aren't any areas of the pay scale where somebody would be less competitive. But does that make sense in your dress of question?
Yes, thank you. Do we have any further questions, Vice Mayor?
Quick question. So before this became you all's recommendation, this was endorsed by the committee, right, or the committee as a whole came up with this?
So we came up with multiple different options. We met with the committee and with HR and really expressed to them the pros and the cons of the different options, and they endorsed this option to come forward. So we did design, you know, originally, along with the conversations and parameters that we understood what the city was looking to do, we designed a plan that we felt met those needs, and they endorsed this plan over a couple others.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do we have any more questions from City Council? If not, I have a bunch, so get started. The first one, is there, I appreciate all of this, the data and the information, thinking of your input. Is there a final published report that's going to come from you?
There is a final published report that will come for us. What we typically do is we finalize that shortly after this presentation in case something does change, like, for example, mentioning the, you know, adjustment to the date of the public safety plan. We don't want to publish a document until we know it's 100% accurate. So yes, there will be one to come in the next few weeks.
Okay, perfect. And the other questions are probably more for HR as well as the city manager. Two questions is, how does this affect an NPS? I know right now, with the last budget cycle, if we give 3% raises and an NPS does 2%, then there's always going to be that sort of delta, and there's conversation. Have they been brought into this discussion, and are they doing something different? I just, they, they are separate, but they are not, and so what happens in the city affects the school. So is there, have we thought through that?
No, there has not been any real discussion with Newport News Public Schools to, you know, compare city positions against school positions. There are, in my opinion, different standards, different responsibilities, two different types of, some, in some cases, classifications of positions. So to answer your question, we have not, we have not done that. You know, at this point, what we have committed to discuss for the schools is, you know, some assistance to help them meet the gap between what the state provided to all city, to all Newport News Public School teachers, which was 3%, and that difference between the 3% that was provided to school teachers and those non-instructional staff on behalf of the school system that did not receive that designated funding from the state. So... So I, I don't know of any other obligations, discussions, or, or otherwise that have really occurred around comparing the two pay plans between the two systems.
I just think going forward, especially with Councilman Long and Councilman Ely talking about how much we want to partner with the schools, I support this plan, I think it's long overdue. I just also want to flag, you know, it feels like Christmas, Christmas Day for the city, and if I was in the schools, I would feel a certain type of way that no one informed them, let them know. So let's make sure that we have that overlap, or maybe perhaps there has been overlap, but I think this is good for the city, but let's also inform the schools that we're going to have this, this pretty big pay jump. So our question, how do we prevent, like, an arms race, right? I watched Oppenheimer this weekend, it was great, right? But how can we prevent, we already see it in public safety, someone will, will leave, because now there's the IRS, someone will leave and go to York County for, for two thousand dollars, and they can sort of go around. So as we implement this program, how do we prevent an arms race across seven cities and X counties?
That's just.
So to a degree, unfortunately, I can't solve that problem completely. As long as employees have that option to, to select the job or the compensation that they feel is the best fit for them, there, there's going to be that competitive nature in, in, you know, in compensation. What I will say is, again, we always recommend for our clients taking an intentional look at not just what the competition is doing, but also what you can afford, what you think fits for your organization. When we work with different organizations, they all have different goals. So yes, excuse me, yes, every different organization wants to be competitive, but that looks a little bit different to, to each different organization. So if you have two, two organizations with the exact same goal, if they both said, we're going to be the number-one payer, that's where an arms race comes in, is they always are, are one-upping each other. But as long as we're being, again, intentional in saying, we're going to look at the market, we're going to slot the positions in a competitive placement, and, and really, we don't have to be subject to, you know, the data says exactly this, we're able to use our discretion and judgment and say, hey, it makes a lot of sense for the city to slot these employees competitively without letting the data rule us. And so I think you've done that here, and I would just encourage your HR department, who I know is more than capable of that, just to take that look with the nuanced look at the market each year.
Okay, appreciate it. Why don't we have HR have some more comments as well?
Well, can I ask a quick question real quick? I know you mentioned levels of years of service as a factor in the grade, is levels of education considered?
So levels of education can sometimes be considered. I'll defer to HR to exactly what, what went into the final adjustments there and to what degree education was considered, but oftentimes, I'll just say in public-sector organizations, education is considered when hiring employees, if you're significantly above the minimum qualifications, that can help you to come in above the minimum, but not always. So I'll let HR touch on that a little bit more.
Hi, as you know, the education experience are traditionally what's looked at when we hire employees. Some jobs require certain levels of education, and that will then drive how those jobs are paid. Others are going to be more experience-based, but usually, it's most important that when we consider those things, it's for the entry into the job. As the employee moves through their career, having that foundation education really will not be as important. It's the ticket to get them in the door for the job that's required.
I guess I was more so asking, in the case someone we have with a bachelor's degree goes back to get a master's degree or a doctorate degree, would that factor into?
It could. There are jobs where the value of progressing throughout that job relies on a degree like that, but there are other jobs where the value of progressing through a career maybe is a certification, or maybe it's just longevity. Each job brings with it different requirements, and then how that job evolves and the value increases just depends on what's required to do those kinds of duties.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilman Ely.
Is military experience considered?
It could be, yes, and I am very happy and proud to say we do a fantastic job hiring our veterans, and we are probably one of the top in the peninsula for military families and spouses, but yes, it could. But again, we're not hiring soldiers per se, but we may have jobs that require skills that soldiers bring to us.
Thank you.
A few items, ma'am. First is pooled PTO. I know that's been, I know some cities do that. What's our current policy on allowing individuals to, you know, there's been a death in the family, they've already used all of their bereavement leave or sick leave, but I want to give it, I have extra, and I want to give my PTO. What's our current policy surrounding that?
We don't, we, we used to have a leave bank, from what I understand, but we don't have something actively like that. That would be a nice area for us to explore. You can always take approved paid time off, family medical leave, you could take, you know, we have lots of programs that we support that are federal programs, and we really try to work with the employees so that those kinds of things, you know, we can, we can either eliminate them or lessen them.
Okay.
Just to ask, the school system has one of those, but do you?
I don't know about the school system.
I believe they do, so we might want to take a look at that.
It's a great opportunity.
And I think the rest of my comments all fall, I think we should, I would love to see a study, whatever a study means, for fringe benefits. Some things I think we can take a look at. We can take a look at the pooled PTO or the leave bank. Would love to take a look at a report of what is our tuition assistance compared to other cities. I think in today's age, you know, it's starting to be, it's not a glass ceiling, but it's a, a paper ceiling, right?
Paper ceiling, right.
So you need certain things, so would love to know what our tuition, our TA is compared to other cities. Number three, maternity and paternity, the days off. I know we have the, the basic, but would love to take a look, how many people are having children or having, you know, X, and like, how many days are being taken? And the last thing is the health care. I know, when did we switch over to Centerra Optimum?
That was, and Latessa Davis happens to be in our audience, my Assistant Director of Benefits.
Perfect.
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Let's just, let's just take, I want to take a look at all the fringe benefits, make sure that we have the best contracts, and sometimes, in, in my experience, if you're not able to match the highest salaries compared to the private sector, you are able to offer a better fringe benefits package. Pooled PTO, more, at my, at my last employment before, before moving back down here, it was six months off for, for having, for the father, right? So I'm not saying we do that for everyone, but let's just take a look and see, I, I want to continue to attract the best and the brightest, and I've always said, putting the right people in the right seats is ninety percent of the job.
Absolutely, and actually, I'll even share with you, we have a markup of how our benefits compare in cost to the other local employers, and we have a, we have a great benefits program at a very minimal cost compared to theirs.
Yeah, I would love to see that report, and I'll, Councilman Long?
I, I would like to add retirement too as well, how much of you have retirement package where you can match entry level of how much you had, that you max out on your pay for retirement too as well. So that, I think that would be also needed, because I know, and anytime you're looking at a new employer, you're looking at what the retirement package have to offer too as well, so if you can add that to the study.
And we really, for those out there that are really considering working here, I encourage that kind of real review of our benefit plans, because I think when employees do look at total compensation, those extra benefits can offset where we might be four percent under. You know, it, it makes a difference, and we have a very robust and very healthy benefit plan.
And the, the last thing I'll say is, and maybe this is more of a, a budget item, but I would love to see, Mr. Manager, next time that we do the budget, just like a private company will publish their, their ten K in the annual report that has all the executive compensation, which is like a whole different, like, part of it, like a five to six-page of like, the top executives and have the exact, the executive comp plan, so deferred ma, deferred compensation. Some people have cars, whatever the thing is, there should be an executive comp to include council of what everyone is getting for, to promote transparency, but also, I think it belongs in the budget, and that's what private companies do with their ten Ks. So let's just make sure that that's possible before the next budget cycle. I think we have some time with that. And I will, are there any other comments from council or the manager?
Mr. Mayor, with regard to the executive performance compensation plan, as council may know, we're working currently through the process of preparing and coming forward to the City Council here shortly. I would anticipate, since we're only meeting one time in July, I'm anticipating a plan will be back from the consultant for me, for, for us to review prior to the end of July. So that would put us in a position to present the recommendations to you, perhaps at the only council meeting that you're having in August. So I, I see plenty of opportunity to incorporate what you've requested in the next year's fiscal proposed annual operating budget. The, the other, the other thing, I just want to circle back quickly to your comment regarding the step plan for public safety employees. As a reminder, the council may recall that as a down payment to getting the police and fire and sheriff's personnel to the, the step plan that council approved, they were getting a five percent increase effective with the first, you know, effective with the, the, the new fiscal year. So they're, they're going to get that bump. All the other city employees are getting three, public safety is getting five, and, and again, that was, you know, that was a deliberate effort to ensure that the public safety personnel in the city understood the, the, the fact that their, their work is, is appreciated, and also the, the, the nature of their work and, and how it is vital to the city and its operations. So if, if, we, we will make, as I think we indicated to council, every effort to get it done before December, before January, but remember, it, we're adding cost to the, to the plan for every month that we back it, damp, you know, back it away from January.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I, I think going, thank you for going back to the timeline. I think the communication, how this gets rolled out is going to be the crux of the matter, and so we have the two chiefs in the building, but if there is confusion on council with the timeline, and I can tell you, like, in their ranks, it's probably like, is it January, is it whatever, so let's just ensure that everyone's on the same page going forward, to make sure that we're going to communicate it, communicate it strongly, we have the five percent bump, and then go in January. That would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you both, we really appreciate it. Next up, we're going to have comments, ideas, and suggestions. Why don't we just start on that side of the table and go left to right?
Nothing, sir.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing.
I'll go last.
I, I just want to follow up on Mr. Manager's statement about the performance executive pay plan. Now, when you bring it back, will also show how we're marrying up with the benchmarks of strategic goals that we've already started talking about. What, will that look like? Or will that be a part of the discussion in August?
No, it, it, the, the basis of the executive performance management plan will be the methodology around which the city manager recommends the executive staff of this organization be compensated. And so that takes into consideration a number of factors. One, there's best practices for executive management pay across local government throughout the, the, the country, and secondly, what are our competitors doing in this regard? So you'll have a bit of, of the city manager's methodology to initiate the conversation with the consultant, as well as the consultant's access to what other localities are doing. The consultants are also understanding all of our executive pay practices that we have implemented in the past, so every city manager's had a tendency to have a different way of, of acknowledging and recognizing executive pay, so that practice has varied over the eighteen years that, that I've certainly been here. So, and, and lastly, we've not had any documentation whatsoever about how executives in the organization are to be compensated. So primarily, it is to establish the methodology, the basis for which department directors and other executives shall be considered for compensation, and to document those practices so that they are known and obvious, and, and everyone is aware of them.
Okay, all right, I, I appreciate that, but at some point in time, we do need to come back to where we started talking about benchmarking goals, where we want to see the city in a year, two years out.
The, the effort around benchmarking, the effort around those metrics which transcend and cascade to the work that we take on and take responsibility and accountability for conducting every single day will be part of that methodology.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Councilman Ely.
I just want to say thank you to everybody who put this presentation together, and thank you for the panel, for all your hard work and time. I do remember, Mr. Mayor, when I was on the school board last year, we was up for our compensation, we did a compensation study every year, and we was up, Newport News normally ranked number two, Virginia Beach was always number one, but the school system was always ranked number one, Newport News on the peninsula, and I think this year, they did a five percent raise for teachers and three percent raise for the instructional staff.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager, anything on your end?
No, sir.
Ma'am, you're good down there?
I'm good, nothing, sir.
Okay, just a few items on my end. I want to give a special just thank you and recognition to Chief Rogers and the entire fire department with the, the vehicle that went, blocked the bridge. I think you guys, I think you, and I got the text immediately, I know you responded, and it was a long day, so just thank you from all of us on council. We appreciate just the professionalism, and we're talking about this recruitment and talent management, like, all that goes into it. So thank you so much for all that you do to protect our city. For City Council's awareness, the Supreme Court recently, they reviewed, they, they've changed the policy when it comes to unhoused populations in cities. I would encourage everyone to take a look at that, not resolution, but the, the opinion. It is going to change how we interact with our unhoused populations. Councilman Long, looking forward to your housing study along with the, with the manager, but wanted to flag that to council. I know we do have multiple housing encampments in the city of Newport News, and we are going to have further discussions based off that Supreme Court ruling. Wanted to flag that to council. Mr. Manager, I know we, we have probably already sent out the letters for the community support agency grants, just as, and you may have already done this, but as a reminder, we're going to do it differently for next year, so I just don't want people who have been getting amounts for the last decade to be confused come next budget cycles, so as long as they know we're doing it differently, and, you know, prior performance is no indicator of what they're going to get going forward, it's going to be more council-directed and more toward big priorities, whether it's youth sports or whatever council wants to invest in that year. Just wanted to flag that. And the last thing is, is thank yous. I don't know if Jerry's here, but just thank you to, to Jerry Wilson, and thank you to what I call the communications triumvirate. Not sure who's Pompey, Crass, and Caesar, but I appreciate all three of you in the comms department. Yesterday was a big day for the city. We were able to interact with our congressional delegation and talk to the Admiral of U.S. Forces Command. Fingers crossed, about the eight thousand sailors that are going to be home port at Hampton Roads, I have a feeling we're going to get at least the bulk of it, so that, that would be transformational for downtown Newport News. It would already feed into the CNI, where's Owen? He's, I saw Owen somewhere, Phase Three, I know is coming up, Owen, so it's a combination of CNI, Phase Three, it's a combination of what Florence Development has done with downtown. So ideally, we get that good news late summer, early fall, but as soon as I know, we will all know. But just a big day for the city, and thank you for all the support and the enablers. And with that, Councilman Long, let's take us into closed session.
All right, now move that pursuant to Section two-point-two, Deck three-seven-one-one-A of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended, subsection seven, that the council hold a closed meeting for the purpose of seven. Consultation of legal counsel pertain to actual improbable litigation where such consultation open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating process of the public body, the subject which are cases involving tort claims.
Second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you, everyone. And I think we're going to go council to the room back there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.[539.45]